All right, we're ready, but you are muted, Julian.
What a shame, I'm muted. Oh, I keep thinking of the who, you know, I'm not the deaf, blind and dumb kid, but I do play a mean pinball. Okay. This meeting is being held pursuant to an compliance with ordinance number twenty dash A fourteen and ordinance to ensure the continuity of government during the COVID nineteen disaster. Opportunities for the public to access participate in the electronic meeting will be posted on the www dot albemarle dot org forward slash community forward slash county hyphen calendar. Thank you, everyone. Good to see you. Mister Secretary, would you call the roll?
Mister Bailey?
Present.
Mister Keller?
Present.
Miss Firehawk?
Here.
Mister Bivens?
Yeah.
Mister Randolph?
Present.
Mister Carazana?
Here.
Uh, Mister Claiborne?
Here.
And Miss Moore? Miss Moore is absent.
Thank you very much. Uh, so, uh, moving on to our consent agenda on our last sheet, I think there's only one item there. Anyone wish to pull that one up? Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda? Rick? Rick? You're moving? Accept the consent, are you moving to, are you moving to accept the consent agenda? Moved, is there a second? Tim? Is there any further, is there any discussion on the consent agenda? All those, oops, be, I will wait, I was running another meeting, I will be quiet. Mister Rat, would you please call?
Uh, Mister Claiborne?
Aye.
Mister Bivens?
Aye.
Mister Randolph?
Aye.
Miss Firehawk?
Aye.
Mister Keller?
Aye.
Mister Bailey?
Aye.
Thank you very much, uh, tonight we're gonna move on to our first item. That is, uh, AFD two zero two zero one Batesville District Review. I see Mister Clark is there, ready? May we have the staff report, Mister Clark?
Good evening, thank you, I will go ahead and put my presentation up here in just a moment. So, we have two district reviews tonight on the agenda. I'll go ahead and, uh, do the presentation for both of them together. And then, at the end, there'll be a separate motion for each. If you have any questions, please let me know, but I'll just go ahead and get started. So, we were talking about the Batesville District and the High Mowing District, which are right next to each other in the Batesville area in the southwest part of the county. So, just to review quickly, what are the purposes of these districts? This is a lot of language from the county code that talks about all the different purposes they have, but the last section at the bottom talks about all the different things they do, they're there to help protect agriculture, forestry, biodiversity, and natural resources in rural areas. This is a state-enabled program that many localities have. How do they work? These are voluntary conservation districts that are formed by the landowners that are within them. The districts run in cycles, usually are ten years at a time before they're reviewed. The review periods are the one time in which people who are members of these districts can withdraw by right. And the districts affect land conservation mainly by limiting what's termed as development to a more intensive use. For most people, that means that it prevent, they prohibit some forms of subdivision, not every kind, family divisions are still permitted, divisions over twenty-one acres are still permitted. Otherwise, subdivision is not permitted. They also set a higher review standard for land use decisions that are on items in, in or adjacent to the districts. And they also limit or prohibit state takings for major road improvements because this land is meant to be dedicated to agriculture and resource conservation. Now, some of you will remember, we have what I'm still calling a new policy, only semi-new policy for the district reviews as they come through. And in short, this policy says that when we review a district, if there are parcels in the district that are enrolled in the open space use valuation, in other words, the open space tax category, but that have no development rights, those parcels may be removed at the end of a five-year review period. And that we have to notify them of what their options are to either move back into regular taxation or otherwise adapt to the changes coming. Please notice that is a tax-related policy, the, and for those who haven't been around for this issue in the past, the issue we had for many years was that we had parcels joining the Ag four districts that had no real development potential that were giving up the right to subdivide technically, but they couldn't be subdivided anyway. And they're using that membership in the district to qualify for a lower tax rate that's meant to be for land conservation. I thought it would be worthwhile to take a second and, and explain how these two programs are separate and how they're connected, there's a very common perception in the community that agricultural and forestal districts are a taxation program or that you join an Ag four district in order to lower your taxes. Ag four districts are voluntary conservation programs. They restrict land use. Use value taxation is a completely separate program from a separate part of the county code that sets lower tax rates for rural land uses that are supportive of our comp plan goals and that help prevent the process of taxing farmers and other rural end users at a rate so high that they get basically taxed off the land, it reduces the pressure to develop in the rural areas. In almost every way, these are two entirely separate matters, um, but there is one thing that connects them, and that is, in the state code, one of the qualifying factors for one of the categories of use value taxation is whether or not you're in an agricultural and forestal district. So, this doesn't help you with your agriculture, forestry, or horticulture tax categories, but it can, if you meet that criterion and some others, allow you to join in the open space category. And that's where our tax loophole was, again, it's not an issue with the districts themselves, it was a tax issue where people would join the Ag four district write on the tax form, hey, I'm in an Ag four district, I qualify for the open space tax rate, well, that was true. But the problem being, if they weren't giving up any development potential, we were giving a tax benefit for conservation that wasn't happening. So, that's why we're going through this process of checking the development potential of the open space tax parcels in a program that is not meant to be a tax program. I'll be happy to go back over any of that that's necessary. But I just added a couple of maps here to clarify this difference, um, here's the area of our two districts for tonight. The reddish brown is the Batesville District, the green is the High Mowing District. Uh, you'll see that the, the purple speckles that show land that's in use value taxation is both in and outside the district, but not everything in the districts is taxed that way. So, the, the perception that everything that's in a, in an Ag four district is there purely for use value taxation is not quite accurate, also, there's a lot of land outside the districts that qualify in other ways. You know, all you can really see from this map is, are they in use value taxation or not? And the reason that I've put the conservation easements on here is, being in a conservation easement is a route to a different reduced tax rate, so you can also see that some of that overlaps with the districts, and much of it does not. Now, within our two districts that we're talking about tonight, again, there's that perception that everybody who's in the Ag four district is there to get that open space tax rate, and it's a lot more complicated than that. On the left side, you have the Batesville District, on the lower right, you have the High Mowing District. And you can see there are a whole bunch of different tax categories that people in these districts are in, some of them are taxes at the easement rate, some of their tax at agriculture or forestry rates because of the activities they're carrying out. Uh, some of them aren't even in the use value taxation program, they're paying full rate residential taxes in those purple or pink parcels. So, there's a, there's a lot of variety in how taxation works within these districts, and again, they're not really meant to be a tax program, they're a land conservation program, so just wanted to clarify that difference. So, go back to the simpler maps, this is, these are our two districts around the Batesville area. First, I'll talk about the Batesville Review, this district was created in nineteen ninety, has just over eleven hundred acres, and is up for its ten-year review. There's a couple of quick corrections that need to be done, this is very common when we get through ten years of, of not modifying the code that defines what's in a district. When we go to the board with a revised ordinance that says who's in this district, we'll have to add parcel eighty-five three eight one, which was legally created by subdivision within the district during its term. And we'll have to remove from the county code parcel seventy dash forty, which is no longer in the district already, we just need the code to reflect that. The code allows the owners' heirs to a property in the district to remove it as long as they ask within two years, which they did. So, the district itself district has a lot of important resources in it, nine hundred and fifty of its eleven hundred acres have soils listed as important for agriculture. Uh, it's a mix of open land and forest, there are five parcels under conservation easement. Now, I list here nine hundred and fifty-three acres in use value taxation, and the reason we always list that, again, is not anything about the taxation itself, but an indication of the fact that these parcels of land are in some sort of rurally appropriate land use. So, that's the Batesville District. They have one requested withdrawal, and again, it's a, a by right matter, anyone who's in these districts, if they want to withdraw during the ten-year review, they just write us a letter and say, I want to withdraw, and it's their choice to do so. It's a lot more complicated during the run of the district, and if you all have questions about that, I can answer them, but it's not really relevant right now. The one withdrawal we have this time is for parcel eighty-five seventeen B, which was recently purchased by the Central Virginia Electric Cooperative, they are planning to do especially a permit application for a solar facility there, that wouldn't work legally within the district, so they are asking to remove it. I will say, to their credit, they didn't particularly like the idea of removing it because they didn't feel that, uh, given that the, you know, the facility, if it's even approved, given that they eventually can be pulled out, removed, and the land returned to agriculture, they didn't particularly want to come out, but there's a legal reason why only certain uses can really be found to be compliant within Ag four districts, so they are removing that so that they can proceed with their special use permit. Okay, also in the Batesville District, the new policy that I mentioned about alerting landowners who are in the open space tax category and have no development rights, that they may be removed at the end of the next review, that applies to four parcels, there are nine parcels in the district overall that have, that are in the open space tax category. Only four of those have no small lot development rights, so that's the uh, orange, red, pink, and blue parcels there at the top of the map. So, those four, assuming the board continues this district, they will most likely continue it for a five-year period rather than ten, and then we would notify those landowners of what they need to do to address their tax situation by the end of that time. So, at the meeting on September twenty-third, the Agricultural and Forests District Advisory Committee, which, uh, is the body that, that advises us and the board on uh, matters in the districts and in, in applications to the districts, they recommended renewal of this district for five years. Again, with the requested withdrawal and taking care of those four parcels that need to be notified. So, onto the High Mowing District, this is a little simpler. This district was created in nineteen ninety-one, it's four hundred and forty-five acres, four hundred and three of which are listed as particularly important for agriculture. We have three dwellings, um, two hundred and thirty-six part acres under conservation easements, so are taxed at that rate, and the remaining two hundred and nine acres are in use value taxation of one category or another, so a small district, but one that protects a lot of important resources. There are no parcels in this district that are in the open space category and that have no development rights, there's only one parcel that's in that category at all, that's eighty-four sixty-nine A. It has, uh, five development rights, so there's no issue there. So, again, the committee recommended renewal of this district this time for a ten-year period. So, um, at that point, I, I have motions for you, but I'll be happy, happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions for Scott? Rick? I'm mute. Rick, I'm mute. There you go.
Would you just clarify that Central Virginia Electric Co-op has, of course, the right to take this piece of property out of the Ag Forestry District? At the end of, let's say, thirty years, which is the customary life expectancy of solar farms like this, um, if they remove all of the fixtures in the ground and therefore reestablish the potential of that land to be used solely for hundred percent for agricultural purposes, they can, of course, uh, resubmit to come into the Ag Forestry District, correct?
That's right, um, I don't know if I'll still be here by then, but.
Turning on it.
Um, and we would expect that requirement for complete removal would be in place, the, the one solar facility that the county has approved so far had a very strong and clear decommissioning plan for complete removal of the facilities once it went out of use. And if the board was to, uh, recommend, you know, in order to approve this application, which we haven't received yet, I would expect that we would be recommending the same kind of decommissioning plan here, so, yeah, they could remove all the facilities, uh, and return it to agricultural, forestal, or open space use.
Okay, thank you very much for that, I, I just, I thought that was the case, I just wanted to make sure anyone else listening that they knew that that property could in fact be returned, um, provided they meet those conditions of removal of all the infrastructure.
Right.
Other questions for Scott? Scott, I could, could, uh, before we open up for public discussion, is there a reason why they couldn't be just one district, why they have to be two districts, do you do that, or do the, uh, landowners come forward with the high, high mode district?
Yeah, the, the districts are, are defined and set up by the landowners who group together to apply for them, they're not imposed by us. And you'll notice these two are formed a year or so apart. Uh, it's just generally there are groups of people who know each other, um, sometimes, you know, if you've got the um, but the districts are not, uh, the boundaries aren't defined by, by the county, and usually people want to, so that they get a group together and they want to do that together.
Thank you, if I can make just, just a couple of suggestions, having the map as you did there, and even with the one with the overlay with the various easements, is extremely helpful. Um, I will say that you've, uh, deluded all of my questions because of those maps, and there were many.
Okay.
So, you, you, you've actually done, what you did there was really quite helpful, does anyone else have anything to ask before we go to an open? Well, first, I am asking whether or not, does Madam Albemarle County, is there someone there online who would like to speak to us before I even go there? Carol? Vivian?
Yes, I have. Did you ask me if I had somebody's?
Do we have anyone online, Carol?
Yes, we do, one second.
I'm gonna suggest.
I have Rory Carpenter.
Want to add to, that you want to provide us? Oh, there is one thing, so how will the people who have zero division rights be informed that they're going to be removed from that district?
Uh, we, the assessor's office will send them a letter after the board acts on the district to inform them of what their taxation options are. Um, we can't actually tell people they definitely will be removed because we can't bind the future board five years from now. The best we can do is, and this, you know, we've already done this a few times, and we've got a form letter pretty well set that informs them that this is likely to happen or possible to happen, and that they can, um, pursue one of a few other options, either to go back into full rate taxation now so they don't experience rollback at the end of the five years, or that they find a different way to qualify through actually doing agriculture or doing forestry, uh, on the land, just like anybody else could. So, we lay out all their options for them, so they can make a, an informed decision.
Thank you, so I'm gonna, we, apparently we have someone in the, in the public who would like to speak, so I'm gonna open up our public hearing and ask for us to allow that person to come forward.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
You can hear me, okay, great, I guess I'm the only speaker, which is kind of interesting to me, but, um, my name is Rory Carpenter, I live at, live at, uh, ten eighty-one Kingsway Road, Afton, Virginia, and please let me know if you can hear me okay.
You're fine, you're coming over just fine, sir, thank you.
Great, thank you, excuse me. I really appreciate the opportunity to, uh, to speak in favor of the AF District Advisory Committee's decision to recommend renewal for the Batesville District, um, and I will be brief and to the point. My land abuts this district. We built our house in nineteen ninety-one, one year after the district was created. Uh, we had wanted to join, um, the district, but our property did not meet the acreage requirement. Uh, but we have certainly benefited from having land that is adjacent to the district. Uh, therefore, it might seem self-serving for me to be speaking in favor of the renewal, but I, I truly believe it benefits all county citizens to have rural areas such as this to preserve the air, water, and ground quality of our county. Not to mention the beauty of this part of the county, which was evident today to anyone who ventured out here to the western part of Albemarle today. Um, I'd like to applaud the landowners who have put their properties into this district and wholeheartedly support the recommendation, and that's it, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, sir, is there anyone else?
You're welcome.
There's no one else, uh, Mister Chairman, there, our clerk is having some technical difficulties with her, uh, speaker system.
Understand, thank you, sir. Then we're gonna close the, uh, public hearing and bring it back in, commissioners, do you have any other questions for, for Mister Clark? And I, oh, yes, sir, Miss Keller?
As many of you know, I served on that Ag and Forestal Advisory Committee, and, um, I guess I would just like to point out that this, uh, we've talked about this with Scott before, but this, this might be something that would be an interesting joint meeting in the future. One of the, um, members is the county assessor, and so we actually had the benefit of, of Scott and the county assessor sort of going back and forth about the piece, that one graphic that was shown, um, by, by Scott about the the value, the ag value versus the tax, you know, without that, so, I just I think that that and the conservation easements, the way these all come together would be a useful, maybe every four year, every two or every four year joint meeting just to talk about those things and how they fit together in the rural area land use.
Julian, are you talking?
No.
Okay.
I'm moving my lips and nothing's coming out. Uh, Scott, you have two things before us, that these, so this is for the
This is for Batesville.
This Batesville, okay. Would anyone care to move or make a motion vis-à-vis the Batesville, um, matter before us?
I'm, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Thank you.
Mister Chairman, um, before I do though, I just want to make a statement that, um, while it is not the Planning Commission's job to make policy, that's the job of the Board of Supervisor, I still believe that, uh, parcels should be able to remain in the district even if they have no development rights because the district supports IRR purpose simply then preventing, uh, existing development rights from being realized. Um, so I've made that soapbox speech before at much greater length, so I'll spare you that this evening, um, and move to the motion. I, uh, recommend renewal of this district, of the Batesville District for a five-year period.
Is there a second? Second in by Mister Keller? Thank you, Secretary, could you, could you move us through this?
Mister Bailey?
Aye.
Mister Keller?
Aye.
Miss Firehawk?
Aye.
Mister Randolph?
Aye.
Mister Bivens?
Aye.
And Mister Claiborne?
Aye.
Thank you very much, can we move to the next one? So, this is the High Mowing District, is there a little mowing district somewhere out there?
This is the only mowing district we have.
Okay, just checking, wanna make sure we don't get our mowing, you know, it's that time of year, get your mowing right.
Okay.
Is there someone who will make a motion on the mowing?
I'm prepared to make a motion since it's my district, um, and I will say that, that its name, its name choice is unfortunate. However, I moved to recommend renewal of the High Mowing District for a ten-year period.
Is there a second? Second by Mister Keller? Any additional, uh, discussion? Mister Rat?
Mister Claiborne?
Aye.
Mister Bivens?
Aye.
Mister Randolph?
Aye.
Miss Firehawk?
Aye.
Mister Keller?
Aye.
Mister Bailey?
Aye.
Thank you, looks like that passed again, uh, thank you, Scott, and if I can recommend to you, when you bring one of these back to the Planning Commission, those two maps and the other ones where you talk about, uh, the other sort of illustrations that you have, they would be really helpful to have in the back.
Okay, well, we'll keep that as part of the standard package from now on, then.
Thank you very much, good evening. Moving on to ZTA two oh two three, outdoor activities slash outdoor storage and recycling uses in wrong. That's the wrong one. No, that's right. Recycling uses in industrial zoning districts. And I got, I, today I will admit, I've got confused, and I, I made a full set of confusion to every, to Karen and to Charles today about what I thought we were talking about tonight. We really are talking about storage and not the creating of the recycle. And on that note, thank you. Uh, well, yeah, who are we, we, well, back in, in bar, I'll look to you to say.
I'll be, uh, doing the presentation this evening. And I will be sharing my presentation here, hopefully you can see it. Is that coming through okay, the presentation?
Much better, thank you.
Thank you. I'm here this evening, uh, for the public hearing, um, for this item that you saw in October. So, we will go over a little bit of the background that we covered in October, uh, but the changes before you are consistent with what was Uh, but the changes before you are consistent with what was presented and you've provided feedback on at the work session. Just a little background, the timeline that led us to this. Um, we mentioned that the industrial districts were comprehensively looked at in 2013. And since then, we have had some special exceptions come forward in 2019. We've also adopted our climate action plan, uh, which led to this zoning text amendment being added to the community development work program in March. And a resolution of intent was adopted and this was initiated by the board in June officially. And then I mentioned, we had the work session in October that led us to this point, uh, with the public hearing this evening. So some of the some of the, um, lenses we analyzed this ETA with or stakeholders or policy that we looked at um, included, as I mentioned, the climate action plan, which has a recommendation to increase the, um, amount of materials that are recycled and diverted from landfills. And we also consulted with economic development staff, resource protection, um, goals in the comprehensive plan were reviewed. And then we also considered neighbor impacts in the characteristics of where these districts are located and um, what's adjacent to them in terms of what might be appropriate. I wanted to mention, this came up in our work session, that we have a number of different sections in the ordinance that work together and, um, provide regulations for industrial uses. Starting with, you know, what uses are permitted where in the industrial districts generally. And that's where we have some height regulations and the minimum buffer requirements for any industrial use. Uh, we have something called performance standards in our ordinance that, that get at those other impacts such as vibration, heat, glare. That's where we find the requirements for any industrial use, uh, to submit a certified engineer's report where we really get a detailed description of their processes, their materials, any hazards, any mitigation. You know, related to mosquito control. Um, we would consult with any outside agencies or the fire marshal's office during that process. Uh, and that's when we would find out, you know, what materials are stored and where. We mentioned last time there, this isn't affecting the lighting regulations or noise regulations that would apply to these uses. It's really very focused on section five regulations, which are above and beyond all of these other things for certain uses uh, where we thought they needed that additional regulation. So, once again, just a reminder of how much, um, heavy industrial land is out there and where. Pretty limited, 105 acres and most, um, most of the industrial land is on an entrance corridor. And, um, a percentage of it is also either located in the rural area or adjacent to rural area or residential uses. And, um, stepping back, uh, to the zoning regulations that are applicable. Uh, when we're talking about recycling uses, we wanted to, uh, clarify again that recycling collection is, uh, in storage, if you will, is by right in any of these districts. Um, but would also be subject to those performance standards. Recycling processing is by right in heavy industrial, but by special use permit in, excuse me, the light industrial districts. And the definitions that you've seen before, um, and you really, you know, framed well during your discussion at the work session, you know, collection is like we see down here at McIntyre. People are putting things in containers to be transported to a recycling processing facility. We may find, you know, as we move forward, that we have both located in the same place. And we talked last time that things in containers are not considered outdoor storage. So the two sets of regulations, you know, this, this zoning text amendment is very specific to section 5.1, 5.1, outdoor activities in industrial districts and then 5.1, 5.2, which is the outdoor storage. So now I will go over those changes, which are very minimal for outdoor activities. Uh, that is, uh, includes the recommended, recommendation in the draft ordinance that, um, we provide a budding owner notice prior to acting on a special exception. Special exceptions again are only, um, granted by the board of supervisors. Um, if we recommend approval, they go on a consent agenda in terms of the process at the board, but we have the option to schedule them as an action item and have discussion about them if we, if we feel that's necessary. You know, based on the staff analysis and the individual requests and any abutting property owner concerns that might be raised. And for section 5.1, 52, we have, um, some more, more changes to that section. We wanted to add flexibility in the types of screening that, that would be provided to outdoor storage areas. And then also allowing the outdoor storage of inert materials at recycling facilities or collection centers, um, provided that there is that increased setback and buffer that is, um, in keeping with some supplemental regulations we have for some other types of, um, uses that are allowed in the industrial districts. And again, adding that requirement that any, um, special exception that is reviewed or acted on, um, that abutting owners, uh, receive notice. So we have recommended approval of the attached ordinance. And the, the suggested motion is that you move to recommend approval, um, of attachment B, you know, following your discussion and, and questions.
Thank you very much. Other questions? Yes, Cory. And Cory, then Karen.
Yes, could you just explain real quickly, what was the difference saying shall and must? Like shall was stricken and must was added? Was there like a, is there a policy difference here?
Uh, have you all had Andy Herrick's, um, tutorial on shall and must? I can't remember which meeting. It comes up in a lot of meetings, but um, based on legal advice, um, the standard is now must, not shall. So you'll see must, you must use must, you shall not use shall anymore.
Sounds like I need to take that class.
It's, it's a, um, two-minute. Is that, I'm not sure if Andy's, um,
He's right there and he's getting ready. He's getting ready.
It's two minutes, but it's repeated frequently. And what I always tell our staff these days is thou shalt not, you shall. Um, and, and all seriousness, that actually is a movement in legal draft and moving away from shall because shall can be ambiguous. And, and, uh, the suggestion is to use, uh, words, uh, more specific words like, uh, must, will, may, or should rather than shall, which can mean any of those.
You were under two minutes.
Wow. Mine's really easy.
Cory, will you finish? Uh, Cory, will you finish? Okay, Karen.
Yeah, mine's easy. Um, under 5.1.52A. Is there an extra word left in there? The word screened?
I believe so, yes. That's
Yeah, yeah.
More typo on the slide than, uh,
Okay, was it, it was in our, um, in our staff report too, and I think
Okay, yeah, we didn't
You meant to strike screened as well, so that it just ends with the word agent, period. And then the rest of, screened and the rest of that is stricken.
Got it.
As shown. Yeah, okay, that's it.
I must strike that.
You must strike it.
Actually, if I, if I could raise a point as well, and I'm sorry, I'm not interrupting anybody else, but it does seem to me as though there's differences between the proposed ordinance in the body of the report and then what's been attached as exhibit B. And I believe what's in the body of the report on page three is the more current version. Um, so if there's a consensus in, in favor of moving forward, I would suggest that the, um, commission adopt the suggested language in the body of uh, staff report rather than exhibit B.
I think that Andy, what you're proposing has merit, especially because shall appears in B.
Must does here. Other, thank you, Andy, for the, so we're now with, for everyone, we're looking at the, the two, uh, items on page three. Where it says recommended ordinance changes are look indicated below and, and provided an attachment B. We're actually gonna focus on what's on page three. Daniel?
Well, since we're on the shall kick, it seems like both in the slides and in the body um, on 5.1.52C, still list shall, set a concern? There were no outdoor short, storage shall be located within 50 feet? Or is that a proper usage shall? Get my education today.
That's a, that's a good question. I had to strike a balance between going in and fixing all the shals and just sort of cleaning up the shals we were, where we were gonna be changing the ordinance anyway. And in an act of restraint, I limited myself to just changing the shals where we were changing the ordinance anyway and leaving the shals where we weren't changing the ordinance alone.
And that shall stand as a good explanation to me.
I'm glad that it will.
Okay. Any other questions from commissioners? Tim?
So this isn't one of the specifics, but it's something that was referenced about the adjoining or close by property owners. Um, recently I've become aware of issues with, uh, proposed dump in Cumberland County. I know this is a dump, but still, the issue is one of environmental justice and, and minority populations and, and what voice they're given. And so I wonder if this is most likely more question for Charles. And maybe it's something that we need to think about for overall wording that's beyond this specific set. But how can we, um, how can we let people who have not necessarily been given voice in the past, that they will have a voice if their, if their cultural area is potentially impacted by something like this, where it seems like we're moving towards a, a situation where if A, B, and C is met, it will be approved?
I, I can respond and then maybe Charles or Bart can jump in. I think that, you know, given, I think we said before that industrial uses are, you know, heaviest, potentially intensive uses, that we wanted to add that so that there would be a budding owner notice. So that would be the properties completely, you know, on all sides and across the street that touch, um, the subject property that maybe, may have a special exception under review. And it's not each of these special exception analysis that may look simple or the reports may look simple when they end up the board, on the board consent agenda, but we really are thinking through the neighbor impacts and the resource, um, any resources that might be impacted nearby. So, uh, just because someone applies, there's no guarantees that we would support all special exceptions. I mean, that's why we're still, um, keeping that on a case-by-case basis for some of these regulations like setback. For the setbacks, but I think we, you know, probably trying to move in a direction that, you know, allows more participation. We don't have, uh, you know, I think we have some discretion, you know, in terms of what we think we need to review a special exception. And if we thought that we needed to notify a broader, a broader, uh, range of people, that, that might be something I think we can do. You said maybe Charles and might have some input on this as well.
Yeah, I think, uh, let me jump in, Bart Sobota. So A, B, and C, I think is Commissioner Keller is trying to point out govern the by right use. So, un- unless you're asking for the special exception to modify those, I believe this, uh, way Mr. Keller put it, if those are met, then it's approved. So I guess technically that, that's correct. How we get farther than that, or if we decide to make this use, say by special permit as opposed to by right, that's a, that's a different discussion. Um, but point taken, Mr. Keller, when we, we talk about how do we, um, equalize the opportunities for folks to speak? Am I getting that correct? Are we on the same page?
Yes.
So along those lot, uh, along Karen, for so long those lines, so that when you bring something before us, or, because I assume, oh, well, if it's a special exception, it doesn't come to us unless the board asks it to come to us.
Correct.
Right, okay. So then I would suggest if you bring something to the board that you put a note in there or a paragraph of what your outreach has been and how you've engaged with the community since there's more scrutiny about what, what, how are our policies, how are our actions? Um, uh, working with the, uh, uh, how are they engaged with the communities that sit around them? So just to make sure that you're showing the board that in fact that you, you have engaged in those activities, that you've reached out or you've looked or you've surveyed, you can say, but those areas, like, uh, well, Tim, are you still on this matter? You're still on the subject? Okay. Karen, are you on the subject? Okay, Tim? You're, you're muted. You're muted, Tim.
And I'd like to hear from Charles and maybe Charles, where you're keeping the list of things to do. And I know that we're, you know, going a year out on that list. But it seems to me that environmental justice is, is, is something that should be on a, on a checklist that staff is looking at just the way they are looking at affordable housing and economic development and land use compliance and those sorts of things. And I, I'm not concerned with it for this particular piece, but I would like to see it as something that is, is going to be on the checklist, the punch list, whatever we want to call it, for every project that has this, a change involved in any sense.
So I can speak to a few, a few of those, uh, a, a few comments on it. Um, as far as the public participation component, uh, in many of these instances that require, uh, community meetings, uh, and your public notices be sent. As the director, it all, it's also written in that I can require, uh, additional community meetings as needed, uh, to ensure that, uh, the intent of that i- is, was met. Um, on, on the larger scale, we actually, uh, are working with the Office of Equity and Inclusion, Ms. Siri Russell. Uh, she is piloting a program to ensure that projects are equitable. Uh, the Rye Road corridor is one that we're gonna start to look through that at. And it is, uh, so basically a type of checklist where you analyze projects and different components. As far as applying that, that's still, is in a, in a pilot program stage right now. We haven't figured out how to, uh, fully apply that to development applications, but I mean, I think there's obviously potential there to continue growing that. And then also, a- as you all know, we have our work plan. One of the first major things in our work plan is a comprehensive plan update. Uh, we also have a major zoning ordinance update. So I believe we have, uh, quite a few opportunities to address some, some of the bigger picture items that can then feed into our ordinances and how we, uh, conduct our business here. So, definitely plenty of opportunities to, to revisit this and ensure we are looking at this through, uh, the correct lens.
Thank you. That's, I wanted, I just wanted to hear it from you, for the public to hear that.
Thank you. Karen?
Never mind.
Really? So, um, anyone else? Question, I have a question for you. So can you help just, just explain why between 51 and 52 on B, we go from the, the activity cannot, can only be 100 feet from, excuse me, cannot be, cannot be less than 100 feet from residential agricultural district. But on C, storage can be within 50 feet. But then we go below and we say inert materials must be stored 100 feet away from them.
So D only applies to those inert materials at a recycling center? And C would apply to any other type of outdoor storage that's allowed for other types of industrial uses? You know, maybe, uh, landscaping materials like it snows or that's the only example that comes to mind, actually.
No, that's, that's a fair example. Thank you. And then on the other piece of this, do, are we giving owners of the properties the opportunity or the, or the option to decide what the buffer will be? So if I'm next to a, next to a, uh, resided in dwelling, I can put up a tree as opposed to putting up fences?
We are allowing, um, a, a combination. Uh, it could be vegetation. It could be a fence. It could be a combination. Uh, and this is wording that comes from, uh, it's, we're making this consistent with our site plan. Uh, section of the ordinance that talks about screening. Uh, so it is, um, to the satisfaction of the agent, which is typically, I guess these days, Charles and, um, our review staff in terms of, of what we think's providing that screening. Uh, we've seen that We've seen that, you know, depending on the property and the characteristics that but it is up to the applicant to propose it and then we decide if it's sufficient or not.
It's sufficient, okay. Because I was, I'm going, you know, everyone will know that my touchstone is Yancey Mill. And so, you know, the retreats, now there's a lovely fence there, so I give whoever a help ensure that a fence got in front of the front property. And so to make sure that, because trees, I remember, I forget which one of my colleagues said that trees provide some buffer, but it doesn't provide the kind of sound buffer or the kind of loose buffer that you might get if there's a, if there's a wooden fence there. So I want to be I want to be aware that that's something that that you both are sensitive to as you're reviewing these, these applications.
Mr. Chairman? I, I rescind my never mind.
I knew you were.
I know, you're like.
I just, I was like, I wouldn't even believe in that.
Rebecca, can you, I've just stuck on the shall and must, I found that intriguing. The, on, on section B, under 5.1.52, the parts, materials and equipment stored in the storage area shall not be stacked higher than provided screening. Does that not, does that shall not need to be a must because it's just a guidance for review or does it need to be a must?
Yeah, that might be one we want to change to must. If, I think Andy and I will take another look at the musts and the shells after.
If I might suggest that might actually would probably better be a may. May is probably more appropriate in that context.
But may not be.
Sorry.
Thank you. Are there others? Mr. Rap, do we have anybody, well, I should ask Carolyn, do we have anybody outside waiting to speak?
No, sir, we don't.
Mr. Carazana, do you have anything to say about this?
I don't.
I hadn't heard your voice, we'd heard everybody else, never we hadn't heard you, so I wanted to get you in there.
But it's good to hear yours.
We have no one out there, so why don't we move on and see what else? Rebecca or Bart, do you have anything else you'd like to add to this?
I do not have anything else to add.
Can you go back to your screen then?
I think we do need to amend the motion that we've suggested for you.
Yep, how would you like to amend that?
Well, I think Andy said we should, you should move to recommend approval of the.
Section 5.1.51 and sections 5.1.52 as shown on page three of the staff.
Right.
There's the motion, who wants to make it? Y'all don't leap up here all at once. I think I saw Daniel's. Then does he, oh, yeah, Daniel moved. Is there a second?
Second.
There you go, thank you. Any further discussion on this? Sir? Roll call.
Mr. Claiborne?
Hi.
Mr. Randolph?
Hi.
Ms. Firehawk?
Yes.
Mr. Keller?
Hi.
Mr. Bailey?
Hi.
And Mr. Bibbins?
Hi. Thank you kind.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rebecca and Bart, good to see you both.
Yes, nice to see y'all too.
Good to be here.
Yep, and we're going to move on. Commissioners, are there any reports? There we go, Cory, yes, please.
I'll be really brief. The Pan Top CAC met on October 27th and the, the main thing of this was a presentation by VDOT on that the Virgin Diamond Interchange, exit 124. And I just wanted to congratulate Mr. Rap and you, Mr. Chairman, for setting up that presentation by Kevin McDermott, that the timing was perfect. And so I think the more and more of those presentations we can have strategically sprinkled throughout our schedule, the better we're equipped to be more effective with our CACs. So I just want to say thanks and see how that timing just worked perfectly together. So that's it.
Please, we're pleased that that could happen. Obviously, folks, if you're looking, if you're driving down 29 going towards Karen's district, you will see that VDOT has created a whole completely different set of roads down there. Over to some point, we'll figure it all out, but you know, they're stopping you. So if you haven't, if you don't go that way, I'm not suggesting you do. But you go down the 250 bypass going towards Dr. Hose. You'll see that there's, there's new traffic coming up there, which is interesting. Anybody else? No one else? Okay, Charles.
All right, at the October 21st Board Supervisors Meeting, there, the board approved the airport animal clinic special use permit and special exception. One of our four slakes came for the commission maybe a month or two ago. One other item, on November 4th, the board also held a work session on the Ryo 29 form-based code. And that was just a focus on the public spaces and future maintenance and ownership of those. However, the full draft will be presented here to this commission next Wednesday at our work session. So looking forward to that.
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, sorry. Looking forward to that. There's a lot of great work that's been put into that. It's some exciting new type of code that has a lot of potential for us.
Anything else? Okay, old business, old business. And you know, there's some old business because we all got a note from Charles on this. Are there any, are the, any nominations for the CIP advisory committee? Is anyone feeling call? Oh, excuse me. Yes, Tim?
I would like to nominate Karen Firehawk for that position.
There you go. Is there a second?
Second, if she's not mad at me, second.
I was thinking the exact same thing.
Are you playing your hands there, guys? What's going on here? Is there, are there other nominations?
They're waiting for me to send payment now. Get them to not nominate.
Is there anybody else who would like to step into this conversation? I'm not seeing y'all jump around here, gracious. We might be out of here in three minutes.
Should I make a speech now?
No, not yet, please. I don't know, Mr. Herrick, do we have to vote on this? Or is this something?
We do? I would, I would suggest let's err on the side of formality and take a roll call.
Mr. Rap, please.
All right, Mr. Claiborne?
Hi.
Mr. Randolph?
Hi.
Mr. Keller?
Hi.
Mr. Bailey?
Hi.
Mr. Bibbins?
Hi.
Ms. Firehawk?
Okay.
Now, if you need, if you feel so inclined to make a speech.
That's okay.
Okay, good. Thank you, thank you, Karen, thank you, Tim, thank you, Cory. Let's see, what do we have? Any items for follow up?
That's it.
That's it. Okay, guess what, folks? This is really the shortest one we've had.
Don't jinx us.
I won't say that, I won't say, we'll say anything. So our next meeting is next Tuesday? At eight o'clock? No, it's not, this next meeting is six o'clock.
Six.
Confuse me with these.
It'll be a work.
Depends on what time zone you're in. It could be eight o'clock, just.
Well, thank you, that's right, thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Remember, everybody, so you know, this is my drill, wear your mask. Thank you for voting, however you voted. Thank you for voting, wear your mask, because the numbers are looking scary again. And I can't afford to not have any of you. Oh, I like that mask, that's a good one. Thank you. I can't afford to have any Tuesday night that we're scheduled for a meeting to not be able to see your, your wonderful faces. So take care of yourself and see you next Tuesday. Okay, bye, thank you. Bye bye.
Good evening.
Yep, good evening. Hey, Charles?
Yes, sir.
We've got to talk sometime. Hey Bart, what's up?